Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Odette Ramos. I'm the vice chair. I am chairing the committee today. With me today, our members are on their way back in, I'm sure, but I know that we have a busy afternoon, so I wanted to get started. So, committee member Zach Blanchard is here from the 11th District. And when they come back in, I know that Councilman Glover from the 13th and Councilman Jones from the 12th will be coming back in. Staff today is Toni Leva. You'll have to excuse me. I am on a booster seat. So if I look a little, this whole thing is a lot more bigger than me than I anticipated. Okay, so we're going to start today with Legislative Oversight 250018 for Homeless Services. I know we've got two other bills today, but I am waiting for the bill's sponsor. So I wanted to give him that courtesy. So we do want to start with the Legislative Oversight for Homeless Services. And the way that we're doing Legislative Oversight is we'll have the director give the presentation, and then we'll take some questions from the committee. And then we will have, I believe that there are some, plenty of people that want to speak today, so we want to listen to you all as well. So that's the order of operations. Am I forgetting anything? Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. Director, take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. I'm not going to go through all of the slides, so I will do my best to be brief so that we can also open it up for the questions, as well as to allow for some folks to give a presentation. My name is Ernestina Simmons. I serve as the Director for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And let's figure out how to make it go. I'm sorry. Thank you. So our office, our purpose is to respond to the housing crisis in Baltimore City, but our mission is to make homelessness rare and brief. Our teams include the street outreach teams, coordinated access, emergency shelters, and a slew of permanent supportive housing programs that we're going to talk about a little bit today. In 2024, our agency was able to serve 21,306 clients through supportive services, shelters, permanent supportive housing. We were successful in enrolling 6,609 clients in coordinated access. And for everyone to understand, coordinated access is our first entry point for housing intervention for clients in our system. We was able to provide 4,249 clients with permanent supportive housing. We also administered a housing opportunity for people with AIDS program. And through that program, we was able to house 726 households. This year, our program was also successful in exiting 1,044 clients to permanent housing. We served 3,106 unhoused residents through our outreach teams, providing them with 63,261 services. We served 2,902 clients in our city-funded shelters. And our DV programs served 224 survivors of domestic violence with shelter and housing supportive services. Typically, we get into what the system's performance measures look like for the city of Baltimore. Each of the graphs represents something that we're really intentional about looking at. The first one takes a look at the length of time that people are homeless from the time that they completed an intake. And what you're looking at at the very top of the graph is what are the national trends versus the city of Baltimore. The spaces that I'll highlight today has to do with the number of clients that are experiencing homelessness for the first time. Although I have on my glasses, I can't quite see, so please bear with me. But in 2024, we have had an increase in clients experiencing homelessness for the first time. I believe that number says 2,910, which is an increase from 2023. The other number that I'm going to highlight is when we take a look at the city of Baltimore and how we trend as it relates to clients that are unsheltered, how are we doing with exiting them to permanent supportive housing? What we're looking at here is our trend. Last year, we were at 13%. This year, we're slightly up, but we are definitely behind the national trends for how we do with exiting clients from the street into housing. Later on today, hopefully, we'll get into some of the strategies and things that we're thinking about that's going to help that, but that is a significant area of focus for us. The last measure is Systems Performance Measure 7 that I want to highlight. What this measure looks at is, once a client that is in permanent supportive housing, is our community successful with keeping them housed? Permanent supportive housing is not just housing, it's also supportive services. When you look at the programs that we administer through the federal government, we're housing the most vulnerable clients in Baltimore City. Supportive services is a critical component to that. And what we're learning is if the supportive services is in place, those clients are able to remain stable in housing. Baltimore City is leading that retention rate, as you can see, year over year. Each of these measures was just allowing us to take a deeper dive into the system's performance measures. I'm going to go through them. This one had to do with what we mentioned earlier about those that are experiencing homelessness for the first time in 2024. This number is 2,910 versus in 2023, this number was 2,566. This number is again is those successful exits for people from the street into housing. And you're able to see a little bit better of what are the national trends. 25% was the number in 2023. We were at 13% this past year. Some efforts was made. And we're doing a little bit better, but definitely not where we aim to be as a city as it relates to exiting clients from the street into housing. What this is looking at is the point in time count year over year. Prior to, our 2025 data is preliminary data. What you're able to see is our most recent pit count had a drastic increase from 2024 of what it looks like for clients that's coming into our system. 2023 was not a mandatory unsheltered count year. As a result, our community did not do an unsheltered count. But when you look at our 2025 count, we have 188 clients that are on the street on that one particular night. As we get into this a little bit later, what you're going to be able to see is the distinction between what's happening to people that are on the street. In 2023, when we did this count, 23% of the clients that was unsheltered had self-reported being an adult with substance use disorder. When we took a look at this data for 2025, we're now up to 76% of the clients that are unsheltered on the street reporting that they are suffering from addiction. That is something that our community has to be intentionally focused around. It makes it far more challenging to navigate a housing system that's fairly complex to get into housing once you're suffering from addiction. This slide is helping everyone to understand, what does our shelter system look like? How many clients are we serving in our emergency shelter system? I did a comparison between 7-1/2022, 23, and year-to-date. What I'll just like to highlight is that we are seeing increased numbers for clients that are both in our emergency shelter, as well as our night-by-night, as well as families, increases in families that's coming into our shelter system. As a comparison, between 7-1/2022 and 2023, you saw 721 clients in our shelter system. Rather, that's households, 721 households in our year-round shelter. Versus 7-1/2023 through 630/2024, we have 1,102 households. Year-to-date, as of 4-1, we're already at 821 households. The second layer is looking at emergency shelter night-by-night. Again, those are households. In 2022, 1,543. You saw this drastic increase as it's related to 7-1/2023 through 630/2024. We were at 1,935. What I'm going to focus on now is the next number, 7-1/2024 through 4-1/2025. That is that current winter shelter season that we just concluded. We had over 3,000 households that needed some support during the winter shelter season this year. The bar graph on the left is just, on the right-hand side is really just an indicator of clients. We have served 7,720 clients from 7-1/2024 through our emergency shelters and our street outreach teams. Now, we're going to get into permanent supportive housing, permanent housing versus affordable housing. A lot of the committee members has asked us, what is the difference between permanent supportive housing, permanent housing, and affordable housing? Permanent supportive housing is a long-term housing assistance with supportive services provided to assist disabled households to achieve long-term stability. Clients typically pay 30% of their income. If you have no income, you pay no rent in permanent supportive housing. All of our permanent supportive housing are federally funded programs. Later on in the presentation, we'll get into what does that look like in terms of funding and gaps. But what I'll highlight for permanent supportive housing for the city of Baltimore, we house the most chronic clients in this system. There are clients with severe mental illness, substance abuse addiction, or high-level chronic health needs that they absolutely require supportive services in order to continue to live independently. When we take a look at affordable housing programs, a lot of the clients that we serve are not eligible for affordable housing clients. It requires clients to be at 30% of the AMI. Most of the clients that we serve, you're able to see what that income for them looks like. It's $11,604 annually. So the clients that we're talking about today are not clients that are eligible for affordable housing programs. They are eligible for permanent supportive housing. And we're also going to talk a little bit about permanent housing programs. In 2023 versus 2024, what you're taking a look at is what does MOHS's housing portfolio look like? We serve between all of the programs we talked about earlier today, one that I did not mention, which is programs that are also served through the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. We will get into that in the next slide. But in 2024, we serve 4,921 programs through the programs we talked about earlier, which equals 6,784 clients that we're serving in our housing programs. This is a makeup of what does our federal portfolio look like that provides rental assistance for clients? We have our continuum of care. MOHS serves as the collaborative applicant for the COC. Within that project, there are 993 units. Through our HOPR program, we have 541 units. The rest of these units that you're seeing here are all units that are through the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. We have 1,528 units that we are able to serve clients through, through a couple of different programs through the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. And each of them have a different designation. One of them includes 250 vouchers for the re-entry program, set-of-size programs that serve both adults and families. Our HABC Housing Plus program, that's 50 units, is dedicated towards families, and so on. One of the items that was asked of us to talk about is, what does funding look like for supportive services for the clients that we're charged with serving? This chart is able to break down for this group as to what are our challenges and what are our programs and our clients experiencing. Supportive services is not an item that, as you can see, is funded across this ecosystem. We are housing our most chronic households, and that needs the highest level of support. But when you look at the graph and you look at the 3,000, over 3,000 households that's being served, you're seeing $4 million for services. So when we're talking about what are the needs of clients, how do we help? How do we assist? We assist with supportive services. We assist with making sure that people can receive case management, healthcare, mental health, substance abuse services. In all of the programs that we serve, for the most part, you are looking at a funding gap or nonexistent supportive services funding. I laid out a little bit of, we talked, I think in prior meetings, about the ACIS program, what the city has been able to do with this Medicaid pilot program. We've been able to combine state resources through a Medicaid pilot program with clients that are in housing. So what that looks like from the state, they've contributed $2,685,000 for 300 case management slots for our city of Baltimore. And that has enabled us to serve 300 households. We matched them with housing opportunities. But what, when you have 1,528 units and you have 300 slots, you're looking at a tremendous amount of households that still does not have the support that's necessary for them to remain stable in housing. The next item that I put on the board was, we were really focused about what can we do to support youth that's in our ecosystem? We know a lot of times, youth that's aging out of foster care oftentimes ends up in our system. And so we've been working really closely with Baltimore City, DSS, and other partners on, how can we create more housing opportunities that you don't have to be in coordinated access in order to access? You don't need to be the most vulnerable youth in order for us to say that we see you and you need a housing support. We've been able to partner with Homes for America, Baltimore City DSS. We used ARPA dollars to invest half a million dollars into renovation of that facility. And so now 44 units are going to be dedicated towards youth that's aging out of the foster care system. The next couple of slides, and I'm going to now end up turning it over. We wanted to talk about the hotel acquisition in the PSH project. As many of us know, MO, the city of Baltimore purchased two hotels with the ultimate goal of converting those hotels into permanent supportive housing. We have Dan McCarthy and Kevin Linderwood, who are here to be able to talk about where this project is landing to give the group an update as it relates to the project. Going to talk very briefly about the other projects that's on here. Springboard Community Services is another very new project that's going to be dedicated towards transitional age youth. It's going to have transitional dormitory beds, but it's also going to have eight permanent supportive housing units for youth, as well as it's going to have onsite case management, workforce development, and additional supports that's going to aid youth. The other program that we launched in partnership with DHCD using home and ARPA dollars is the Housing Accelerator Fund. What we anticipate coming from out of that project is 177 permanent supportive housing units, and additional 156 affordable housing units is going to come through that initiative. I am now going to turn this over. Are there any questions for me before I allow Dan and Kevin to begin to speak about the hotel conversion project?
Thank you, Director. I do think we can take a second to have a couple of questions for you before we move on to the hotels, because I know that's going to be a more extensive discussion, and I appreciate you anticipating that. I'm going to start with two questions, and then we'll go around to members for two questions, and I'll allow non-members to also participate. I know that Councilmember Parker is here. And I mentioned my other two colleagues were also, when they were in the back, and now they're here. So my question is, you are significantly federally funded. Significantly. It's like the Health Department and MOHS are significantly federally funded. We obviously know that this is a federal administration that doesn't really care about us, and certainly doesn't care about people who are experiencing homelessness. So we haven't seen a reduction yet, but what are you anticipating? And what's the game plan to try to backfill? So, because it also looks like the need has gone significantly up.
The need has grown exponentially for what we're seeing. For this current fiscal year, we're not anticipating any changes for this fiscal year.
Okay.
As we look into, and so for COC fiscal year, it operates very odd time-wise.
It's on the federal year, right?
It's on the federal year, but it's also ahead of time. So for us, we recently received our COC fiscal year 2024 awards, which will take us through 2026. But what we do anticipate is there are some challenges with some of our Housing Authority of Baltimore City EHB vouchers, which was related to COVID dollars. What we're doing right now is doing an assessment with our providers, as well as additional resources that might be available in our ecosystem. There will be very little replacement for 3,000 households, though. There will be very little replacement for that large amount if that was able, if that was something to come from the federal government. What we're doing on the ground right now is working very closely with DHCD State, Housing Authority of Baltimore City, our providers, of looking at what is our existing resources and how do we prioritize our clients that are the most vulnerable in a worst-case scenario of how can we make sure that these households are secure at this point in time? So there's a lot of conversations, a lot of looking at our current assets and resources. But again, it also is the reason why we're heavily invested in making sure that our shelters are available and feel good, and people can access them when they need to. When you take a look at the clients that are experiencing homelessness for the first time, the housing crisis is having a grave impact on people, and the evictions are... So you're seeing people that need shelter that has never had to ask for help a day in their life. And so we're really trying to position ourselves that our shelters are able to do that. So I think what we've done in the city is a multi-pronged approach. We're meeting with our providers. What they've called it is a reimagining conversation of what does it look like if the worst-case scenario happened for the clients that we're charged to serve, and looking at our resources now, and trying to do some preliminary planning.
Right, so looking, it's good to know that we're going to be okay for a couple of years. It's just unless there's some surprise that comes. And then, you know, go from there. And you mentioned that, because I did see that significant increase, and you just made reference to it, but I just want to confirm that we're seeing a lot of first-time accessing the system. And that's because of the affordability crisis, but also we've got an eviction crisis. And that's the cause of it, you think, of that increase? Because it's literally almost double.
Yes, I think that a lot of these dollars that was available COVID-related, there are no, there are very limited eviction prevention dollars in our ecosystem now. So a year ago, you were able to get some support that was going to stop the eviction that can help you. Those dollars are no longer existing. The cost of housing is beyond what most can afford at this point in time. And that's what we're seeing. We're also seeing more families that's accessing our system at this point in time. So I think when you look at a storm, what can a storm potentially look like for the clients we serve? It looks like everything going up except for your income and your resources, and trying to position our community in a way that we can help as they're asking us for some help and support. But when you look at our grid and seeing what our own gap is in a resource, what we would call a resource-rich space, our gap is significant for supportive services.
Yes, so we will go around to the members first. Blanchard, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, I guess, two questions related. One, the, you talked about evictions. Do you have data on, I'd be really interested to see the relationship between eviction numbers in the city and the homeless count?
So our office, outside of the recent flex funds dollars that we no longer have, we don't have any eviction prevention dollars at MOHS. So what I could, so that's not a data point that I would be able to give you. And we don't ask people, what is the reason for you coming into the system for the first time either? So I'm sorry, that's not a data point I would be able to share with you.
Yeah, thank you, Director. And I, like I, as you know, I am extremely interested in the idea of like, how do we prevent people from being homeless in the first place? Right? And so I think that it would be really interesting to see the eviction, like if, hey, eviction prevention dollars are down, is that has to do? Like, we should be able to see a correlation there. And if that's the case, I think that's a really compelling argument to make. So I guess...
I think that since the director doesn't, isn't going to be able to do that, would you think, I'm looking at the Mayor's Office now, that's something that MOCFS might be able to? At least looking at comparing the numbers you have, not, obviously, not asking people for why is a good policy, and that should stay. But if, because MOCFS, MOC, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, has had dollars and do have a caseload. So that might be where we might find that data.
And the request, Tyler Chanel, Deputy Director for Government Relations, the request is around the eviction, what is it around?
It was the correlation, if I may, Councilman, is the correlation between the lack of eviction prevention dollars and the increase in the homeless population. And we wanted to at least see what their caseload is in terms of, you know, who we've been, how many people we've been serving with eviction prevention dollars, and if indeed they ended up being evicted because we ran out of money.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may, I think there's three numbers here. There's eviction prevention dollars, there's number of evictions, and there's, I mean, the point-in-time count, basically, which we have that data. But so to see, to see how much we are spending for eviction prevention and how many evictions are happening in the city.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we have the eviction numbers. That might be something that you get from like the sheriff's office. I can get you from our end. The director can provide the pit numbers. And then I can get from MOCFS the how much we spent on eviction prevention. How, like, what's the time period that you're looking at? In terms of like, what's the period of spending?
So two things. One, the state will be able to provide those numbers for us. So Danielle Meister with the state is going to be able to provide those numbers for you. They administer eviction prevention programs. So that is a data point that they have, and we'll be able to get it to you. What I'll also lift up is that in 2024, we had flex funds and we focused on shelter diversion. So when you look at, when was our community doing better as it relates to homeless services? In 2024, we diverted 1,599 clients through the use of shelter diversion, which was with flex funds. So now that we're in 2025, and we no longer have those dollars and resources, that's also a reason for the increase in clients for the first time. But we'll definitely be able to get you the numbers with the support of the state, sir.
Got it. Okay, and so Toni, you have that, so then that will all come from MOHS.
Okay. And then second, Director, you made a point about all costs are going, all dollar amounts are going up except people's incomes. Specifically, rent. What, can you talk to me about what impact you think rent directly and the rising costs in rent pay? Like, how big of an impact is that playing in homelessness?
It's playing a huge impact. When you take a look at, the fair market rent is $1,604 for a one-bedroom unit in the city of Baltimore. Take a look at how much people are making a month, on average, of who we serve. You can't even afford to even consider being able to pay fair market rent, and that is the cost of living in the city.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
First, I just want to thank you, Director, for you and your team for all the work you do to help, support, and service one of the most vulnerable communities in the city. My first question is, I'm hearing, you know, trying to learn a lot about, you know, unhousing and the challenges we all face. And one thing I hear is how permanent housing is kind of a more of a, a better proactive approach in eradicating homelessness. So I was just wondering if you mind sharing what does, how many, I guess, units we may have for like shelters as far as versus permanent housing? And whether or not there's a transition from the city to, you know, lean more towards permanent supportive housing versus the shelter model, which we are kind of learning that it's just going to continue to cycle and cycle and not necessarily eliminate, you know, homelessness, which is what we all would like to see done.
Yes, sir. I think our focus really is about permanent supportive housing and the creation of units. And that's, that's been a large layer of investment for the city, period. The challenge is always going to look like people have to be stable enough to be able to go through all of the hoops that we have in place. And I say hoops because a lot of our programs are federally funded programs. As such, there's lots of documentation that you need to be able to submit. And when you take a person that's currently at their lowest point, and you don't give them a safe enough space that they can go through an application process and can be safe and warm enough to go through it, it makes it difficult. So oftentimes, I speak about shelters, but it's really about how do we create housing opportunities and a pathway that people can actually get to it for us? Permanent supportive housing looks different from permanent housing in the sense that a lot of our units with HABC, they're permanent housing, meaning there is no services in place for them. When we look at how do we make sure that our most chronic is served, it's through the creation of the supportive services that's really a layered at. I think as a city, we're going to need everybody's layer of support. And how do we invest far more in the services component? There is some work that's being done through the state, through a QAP. There is some work that MOHS is doing just internally with the state, HABC, and others. The ultimate goal is housing, sir. And the fact of the matter is that we don't pour any dollars into supportive services. So when you're looking at having units available, if my clients... So when you're looking at having units available, if my clients can't be stable enough to get into these permanent supportive housing, or if there is no support in them, then we're just going to continue to see the same vulnerable, vulnerable clients come back into our ecosystem. So I think that the way that we make homelessness brand-brief is that the supportive services has to exist within all of the permanent housing that we are creating, and that's not something that we're doing right now. And mainly because you want to use all of your resources on housing, like, right? That's what we say, we want to create more and more housing, and we absolutely do, but there's nothing worse than vacant units. And not vacant units because something's wrong with them, vacant units because people can't afford to live in them. And that's where a lot of my clients are at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'm excited about all the great work, you know, you guys are doing. We've met, you know, at times, and we frequent some of the locations, possibilities of the locations where we can house a lot of our potential tenants. Do we, do we have, when we say providing services to the families, are we including the male, the woman, and the children as a family as well?
Yes, we are. What we've, what we've done in our shelters is, a family is a family, right? So in our family shelters, it can be, some of them is for couples, you're married, you stay together, you're intact family. In our family shelters, each of the rooms is dedicated to the family. We don't mix families in any way, shape, or form. So we keep our families intact. We have some that are single dads with children, single moms with dads, and then we have full families in our family locations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Parker? You're good? Okay. Let's go ahead, the next, next section.
Yes, before I turn it over to, I'm going to start off with Kevin and Dan so that they can talk about this hotel conversion project, then I'm going to move it over to Nico, for Nico to talk about the COC, then we're going to end it off with the state. I promise we won't keep you all forever. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Dan McCarthy. I'm with the Episcopal Housing Corporation. We're a nonprofit developer of affordable housing here in Baltimore with an increasing focus on the development of permanent supportive housing. I have been involved with the Continuum of Care for almost 10 years. My successor is sitting here, and I will tell you, in those 10 years, we have morphed our system into a system. It was not really that well-coordinated, I would say, 10 years ago. But, you know, the level of coordination between the Maryland Department of Housing, the Baltimore Department of Housing, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City has been really impressive. I spent this past week with Director Simmons and Danielle Meister and some of my colleagues here in Chicago strategizing about how we could do this even, even better. So I want to talk about the project that the Director referred to, which is the conversion of the two hotels on the Falls Way. So if you remember, the city purchased two hotels, the former Holiday Inn, 221 North Gay Street, which is a landmark, historically protected building, and then the Sleep Inn, 300 North Front, so slightly south of that. And so our, after we've done our due diligence and our environmental and civil engineering plans, we are planning to apply to the Maryland Department of Housing in the next tax credit round, which is May 16th. We will renovate the Holiday Inn, and our intention is to demolish the Sleep Inn because of some of the civil engineering problems that we've encountered, and build a new building that would stretch from the southern edge of that site, so just north of where the city, I guess it's the refueling station is, up and directly touch to the, to the Holiday Inn. It would produce about 117 units total. So as I say, our intention is to apply on May 16th. We think we would know a decision on our application for the financing sometime in the middle of August, and maybe we would begin construction if we're successful in our application in about a year, with occupancy probably starting a year after that in the renovation piece, and maybe another six or eight months behind that in the, in the new construction building. So, so this is a partnership between ourselves, Healthcare for the Homeless and their real estate development subsidiary called HCH Realty Co., and a company called Beacon Communities, who just did a project with Project Place in Irvington, which was a labor of love, and they have proven themselves worthy partners based on how much time, effort, and energy it took for them to achieve that. So, so that's kind of the overview of the hotels. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions.
I do. I was curious that the footprint of where the hotels sit is actually pretty big, right? There's other lots there that could be built on.
It's just about, the entire is just shy of an acre.
Uh huh. So this, you're going to demolish one building, and are you going to put another, you're going to put another building to replace it, but are you going to be utilizing the land or is that for future?
Yeah, so the new building would go from the southern edge of the, the site up, and it would touch the Holiday Inn, so it would replace where the, the current Sleep Inn, where the parking lot is, would be part of the new building, and then we'd have a connection between the, the new building and the Holiday Inn.
Okay, great. And Director, we have had lots of conversations about the fact that the hotels are helpful because people want to have non-congregate shelters. So how are we going to then, once we are not having these hotels, and I'm super glad that they're going to be able to provide more permanent supportive housing, how do we then make sure that we've still got that non-congregate shelter available?
Simultaneously, we are in a process of looking for replacement shelter spaces. I apologize, I drank something. But ultimately, we're going to replace some with non-congregate shelter. We're not going to move back into, we currently have one space that is a congregate shelter space, but the city is actively looking for replacement of those locations.
So it's, we're going to be trying to do one-to-one then to keep the number, the numbers up?
Not quite. What we're, what we're looking to do is at least have roommates, so it's not going to be a single-room occupancy anymore. We've actually already made that transition, though, of moving rooms from singles to doubles, and we're looking just to continue that, that pattern as we move forward.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions? Dr. Jones, go ahead.
Is there a approximation on how long this process may take from when folks are, you know, started to have to leave and to, by the time it's complete?
So if the, if our application is successful, we'll know in August, and we would begin construction about 12 months later, so let's say August of 2026, with the first permanent residents moving in in August of 2027 into the renovated space, and then the new construction would probably be another six or eight months after that.
Yeah. And the relocation of individuals who are currently there will probably start like right before construction or?
Well, you know, as I say, we will know in August of '25, and I think, you know, we'll, I mean, obviously, we're going to work with the, with Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, so my, my, May, excuse me, August of 2026 construction start will be based on our partnership of them locating appropriate places for the folks that are currently there.
I think also keeping in mind is that this looks a little bit different from, from a normal, in the sense that clients that are in shelter don't have lease agreements. And so typically, when you look at a site, most sites, when you're developing them, you have to make sure you have a plan for everyone in order to move out. What the city is going to do is make sure we have shelter spaces in order to transition them out before these beautiful human beings take the space over, to ensure. But as it relates to tenancy, because I think we had heard, are the clients in the shelters going to be able to move into those units? No, they're not. It's going to be a completely new project that goes through the coordinated access system. The clients that are in the shelter will be sent to another shelter location. So just helping folks to understand is completely different.
Because it's currently being used as a shelter, which means people can pack everything up and take everything with them at the end of the day and kind of come back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
So the, the thing that really makes the, the project work, of course, is the supportive piece, right? We need to provide the permanent housing, but our partners at Healthcare for the Homeless are the ones who provide the services to help folks maintain their housing stability. And I know Director Simmons' slide showed how well we're doing on that, that, you know, housing stability piece in Baltimore relative to our cohorts throughout the country, and that's where Kevin Lindemuth and his staff come in.
Vice Chair Ramos, members of the committee, good evening. My name is Kevin Lindemuth. I'm the CEO of Healthcare for the Homeless and the president, president of our subsidiary organization, HCH Real Estate Company. I have to, Healthcare for the Homeless is a 40-year-old organization. I've been with the organization for about 30 years and have testified before this body many times. I have to point out that 30 years ago, members of the service and advocacy community would be on one side of the room, and members of the city and state would be on another, and they would not agree on the causes of homelessness or the solutions to, to it. And I find it so striking that all of us are coordinated in the same place, understanding that the lack of affordable housing drives contemporary homelessness, and the provision of housing with intensive services can actually end it. And as the Director's slide showed, it is the one intervention that is most effective over time in helping people find housing and keep housing. And I, I find that pretty remarkable, and it's been quite an evolution. Healthcare for the Homeless delivers integrated medical care, mental health services, social services, addiction treatment, dental care at multiple clinic sites. Our largest clinic site is about two blocks from City Hall along the Falls Way, right next to where the hotel project will be. We also have a clinic in West Baltimore in partnership with Grace Medical Center, and in East Baltimore County in partnership with MedStar Franklin Square. We've been trying, you noticed from Director Simmons' slides, it's really important to engage people where they are. And when they are in shelters, we know where they are, but if people are living transiently and on the streets, that's, that's much more difficult. And so we have been piloting shelter-based mini-clinics to bring care directly to where people are. We have a mobile clinic that goes around Baltimore City, and just on Friday, we piloted our first official street team, which is beginning in two areas, in Brooklyn and in downtown Baltimore, and will be growing from that point to try to meet immediate medical needs after building the relationships that are necessary to make those effective. In 2005, then-Mayor O'Malley wanted to close down a park at St. Vincent's. There were 30 people living there. In partnership with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, Healthcare for the Homeless and the Mayor's Office convinced the mayor to provide 30 housing vouchers, and the 30 people living there were moved into their own place and intensive services were provided. A year later, studied by the University of Maryland, everyone was housed, housed and their health had improved. And that really planted the seeds of a growing housing-first supportive housing intervention, which has reached very large levels now throughout, throughout the city. Healthcare for the Homeless serves about 11,000 different people throughout our service sites, but are also housing about 800 people in 550 permanent supportive housing units. Most of those are scattered site, and more recently, we have been developing in partnership with others, project-based sites. So Episcopal Housing and Healthcare for the Homeless have collaborated on three projects now. We're about to convert our old clinic in Councilman Blanchard's district into 42 apartments, including 28 permanent supportive housing units, and are working on the, on the hotel project and trying to overcome all of those many barriers. In answer to Councilman Blanchard's question, just to put some data to it, the Pew Charitable Trust and the National Alliance to End Homelessness have found that for every $100 increase in median rental costs, homelessness goes up by 9%. For every $100 increase in median rental costs, homeless has been found to go up by 9%. So there's very real data that drives that, that understanding.
That was a Pew study?
Yes.
Do you mind grabbing it for us?
I can certainly, I can certainly send it to you.
Great.
Absolutely. And so also, 300 of those 550 slots that we're working with, the services are made possible by the ACIS program, Access to Community Integration Services, which is the Medicaid Supportive Housing Waiver. After the state approved its budget, that waiver is now on a glide path to be expanded statewide. That is very, very exciting. You, you raised, Councilwoman, all of the what-ifs that are circulating, and I would, I would like to call upon all of us, you know, Healthcare for the Homeless also is 87% federally funded when we look at everything. We could spend a lot of time fretting about the what-ifs. I think this hearing today is a powerful example of what is, and we are all continuing this work despite federal challenges to it because we have learned over a decades-long partnership that housing is the best way to improve health and end homelessness, and we are committed as a community, as a statewide community, I would add, to finding the way forward through this uncertain federal environment and in spite of those, those many what-ifs.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Healthcare for the Homeless? I want to acknowledge Councilman Bullock is with us. He's the sponsor of the next couple of bills, but also, Councilman, if you've got any questions, you know, feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's perfect timing. Actually, I was at Grace Medical earlier today and looking at the suite for Healthcare for the Homeless, and so it was a really great way to see the interaction between one of our healthcare providers and one of our service providers, so kudos to the work you're doing.
Yes, and I think we've all tried, had to, we're just all going to have to think about the creative ways and continue to do that, so I'm glad to have all of these partners here. That's great. Director, who's next?
Nico and Jamal, who represents the Continuum of Care.
Great. COC, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first acknowledge my Vice Chair, the Continuum of Care, Jamal Turner, and I'm thankful to our partners. I want to echo the sentiments that Kevin had said. It's great to be in a room of everyone, as we have city and state and a group of people here that care about housing. The Continuum of Care is a coalition of service providers, advocates, government agencies, and people with lived experience of homelessness. Together, we coordinate housing and services across the city, apply for federal HUD funding, and ensure accountability for those dollars that's spent. As Chair, Jamal and I guide our strategic direction, facilitate cross-sector collaboration with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and other agencies, and work to ensure that equity, data, and dignity remain at the heart of our work. Baltimore continues to face a housing and homelessness crisis that cannot be addressed by emergency shelter alone. We need sustained investment in permanent supportive housing, deeply affordable housing, and the wraparound services that allow people to remain housed and thrive. This includes mental health care, substance use treatment, employment support, and case management. I want to echo that case management, as we talk about supportive services, it is imperative that case management accompanies housing. We cannot just say we want to put people in a house and don't have the supportive services that they need to continue to stay in the house. I am unique because I also wear a second hat as CEO of Community Housing Associates. We house those that are homeless and mentally ill in Baltimore City, have been doing that since 1988. We have properties all throughout Baltimore City. Without supportive services, to keep them in the unit, they won't stay. We have to ensure that they have the services that they need to be the best resident that they can be. With that, today, we have thousands of individuals and families on waitlists, many living in encampments or unstable housing because we simply do not have enough resources. Our existing programs are effective, but we are not resourced at the scale that we need, and each year, we still leaving people behind because of funding gaps, especially in supportive services that are essential for long-term housing stability. If we want to reduce the strain on emergency systems, improve public health and safety, and and create pathways out of poverty, we must treat housing as infrastructure and fund it accordingly. That means more local investment, stronger partnerships with state agencies, and a commitment to leveraging federal dollars with flexible city and philanthropic funds. As the Chair of the COC, I urge you to prioritize housing and supportive service dollars in the city's budget. It is not a matter of compassion. It is a matter of cost-effectiveness, justice, and long-term stability for our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. My question to you is, COC is completely and totally federally funded, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And so providing such, you know, very, very, very important service. And so I'm imagining you all are also thinking about some of the innovative ways to continue to keep doing the work that needs to be done.
It's collaboration. I cannot, I don't quite have been on the director, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and our partners because without them, we're just kind of just philanthering, right? What we are looking to is reimagine what that may be. Given the current political climate, we could possibly have thousands of folks on the street. We're working to ensure that that does not happen, but that by far is not an independent approach. It is, cannot be done by the COC alone. It has to be done in collaboration, and as just with public and private partnership.
Well, I'm always interested in, obviously, Director Lindemood knows this, the partnership that had happened with the hospitals, right? The hospitals know that if they're part of the process relative to housing, that they're not going to see the same people in the emergency room three times. So I'm hopeful that we can expand that partnership because I think that's, we're seeing it happen all over the U.S. And so I think we have to be innovative in that way. And I'm happy to take part in those conversations to see if we can do better in that regard or, you know, expand that partnership. Colleagues, do you have any questions?
Yes. Question really quickly. One theme I'm hearing a lot is while housing individual is important, the service part is even more important. You mind sharing with me, like, when it comes to, like, housing and also providing those services, what's like the ratio of, like, their total cost? Is it 50/50 even, or is it mostly 60/40? Just what that package would look like, just to provide service for housing?
An ideal scenario would look like a 1 to 20 model at the best-case scenario. What we're doing right now is, in many cases, is zero to a lot of people in a lot of our programs because of the lack of dollars. So I think what you're hearing is accurate, sir, is the need for services because ultimately you're taking the most vulnerable clients, you're putting them in a unit. Oftentimes, it's a scattered-site unit, looks just like any other lease agreement, and you're telling them you have to do A, B, C, and D, but they need that level of support and services to do it. And so oftentimes, you'll see that they're not able to do A, B, C, and D. And then we see them back on the street again. So an ideal scenario would look like our community could make sure we have a 1 to 20 or 1 to 25 ratio for clients that's in a unit to a case management. And even lower, if we wanted to have, like, the dream scenario, it would be a 1 to 14 would be what we would be looking at. Because when you think about who we're serving, chronically clients with chronic mental illness, you need regular touches and engagement several times a week and not just one time a month or twice a month. It's high level of services that supportive services provides?
I guess my question is, what would that cost? Like, would the cost, would that be in comparison to housing on top of it? You know, like?
$22 million. $22 million. We quantify it for you.
Well, in regards, in regards to housing, like, is it more expensive to provide the service part than housing, or is it less expensive?
If you, if you consider the average cost of housing to be between $12,000 and $15,000 a year, the services are probably roughly half that, about $8,000 a year.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking. Like, the services is less expensive than the housing part, so why?
Less expensive, but far harder to fund sustainably, we find.
I guess.
And as the director noted, absolutely essential. Like, housing only is not a housing-first approach. It requires, and just to demystify that a little bit, I would argue that everyone in this room who is housed needs a lot of services to stay housed. I know I can pay for some, and I have a family that provides a lot of services that supports me. So how is it that we expect some of the most vulnerable members of our community to not need some support in getting housed and staying housed? So it's something that we have to figure out a way to fund sustainably.
Exactly. I'm just trying to understand the largest hurdles on providing, I guess, those services. Is it finding, I guess, avenues that are actually fun, that part? Is that the toughest part? Because it seems like we can house people all day, but we're just, you know, chasing our tail if we aren't applying the services part, especially when that's less expensive than the housing part?
It's less, from a numbers standpoint, we based our PowerPoint presentation on the Medicaid reimbursement rate, which is roughly $8,500 a year for supportive services for each person. Where we're challenged at is most funding is only designed to support units. That's really it. Even as we're looking at all of the development projects that we talk about of the permanent supportive housing, each of these developers are also asked to provide services. And when they run their numbers to see what does it cost to add this service component?
It's just for...
Right. And so now you're getting a developer, similar to these gentlemen, that wants to build, that wants to be able to provide housing. But when you run the numbers and the supportive services, even if we're only saying it's $8,500 a person for a whole year, that's not a part of their budget. That's not something that they can get reimbursement. It doesn't help with operating. So they're operating from a deficit because our community just has not provided a pathway for supportive services to be rather reimbursable. What also trended in our community is things have gone to a fee-based model. There used to be a point in time where there was a lot of grants that would support supportive services, and you can write a grant, and it can be a part of your package. But now we're in a space where a lot of things are now billable. And this is not one of the services that, outside of this pilot, there is no pathway for it to be a billable service. Hopefully, it will become so. But that's been a shift for communities also, going to a billable framework.
I just look forward to changing the narrative on the larger scale of not just talking about housing, but also talking about services that we provide to individuals. I think as a city, we need to, you know, not have those conversations separately, but have them together. I mean, what we're doing, or the current model, looks like, you know, we decide to buy a car, but, you know, we know what the monthly payment is, and it max out our dollars, but we don't have money for gas. You know, it's like now you just have this car sitting there. So it's like you have to also factor in gas and maintenance and everything else to actually use the automobile. So I just look forward to changing the narrative and really giving the right resources we need in order to tackle homelessness.
Can I just add one point, Madam Chair, to you, Councilman? Just to put it in perspective, as I said earlier, when we're talking about housing individuals and those supportive services are needed, you think of someone who moves into a home, and we are high-fiving each other because we took someone off the street. The challenge is what that is, is that they don't have furniture. We see quite a few people that come through our program that are coming from shelters and have nothing. But yet, the program requires them to have furniture. They cannot provide furniture if they're indigent. And if they are indigent and don't have furniture, where are they going to get the food subsidy? And so there are a myriad of different factors that go into those. And that's not part of supportive service. So when we look at the number, and we average $85,000 to $9,000 per person, or whatever that is, that's a much higher number for an agency like myself that are not receiving those dollars. So then we have to be creative in how we are applying those dollars to ensure that a person is not just have a roof over their head, but they are living, right? Because we know that your mental health is not right if you don't have a house, and it definitely can't be right if you don't have food. And they are together, not interchangeable. They have to be synonymous in order for someone to thrive and not just be in a port of survival. And I just wanted to make that note.
Appreciate that. Thank you. We're going to need to move on. Mr. Chair is here as well, and will take over the hearing in a minute. So last presenter, and then we'll take public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Danielle.
Hi, good evening. I'm Danielle Meister. I'm the Assistant Secretary for the Division of Homeless Solutions at Maryland DHCD. And that might be new to some of you because it is new. We just launched, we've been working on homelessness for a long time at DHCD, but launched a separate division specifically on this issue and created my role about a year and a half ago. Governor Wes Moore and Secretary Jake Day both felt like the issue of homelessness needed more attention and urgency than it was receiving. So we've made structural changes to build capacity and have a better framework for working with our partners. So one thing I'll just add to the supportive services conversation before I dig into a couple of talking points is that over the last 15 years, for HUD, permanent supportive housing programs, they've always increased the allowed rent under the grants. The rents portion of a grant goes up and up every year. It's tied to fair market rent. That does not happen for supportive services. So this was the first year in 15 years that HUD allowed Continuums of Care to have an increase in supportive services funding. So that is part of it. There's a deep systemic issue with a lack of funding for supportive services at a federal, a state, and a local level. It's an epidemic. So for us and how we partner with the city, we have our division. Historically, we've always provided funding to all Continuums of Care in the state. There's 10. For the city, this last fiscal year, we provided about $7 million towards homeless-specific programs. We do fund some prevention, although, as Director Simmons indicated, you know, those programs are coming to an end because they were largely funded by COVID programs funded through the federal government. We also coordinate the state's inter-agency council on homelessness, which is focused on policy and inter-agency strategies to reduce homelessness. So looking at things like how can we braid funds across systems like healthcare and housing to create permanent supportive housing? That is the ICH's biggest focus right now. We also, and Director Simmons serves in one of the three designated Continuum of Care seats for that body, we also work with the city around strategic planning and capacity building on youth homelessness. They're participating with us in a Youth Homeless Systems Improvement Initiative through a HUD grant that we received this year. We also, as you heard a lot about, are actively working on permanent supportive housing. So one of the interesting things about DHCD is we have, obviously, a large capital budget, but until this year, none of that funding has supported permanent supportive housing development for people who are experiencing homelessness specifically. So the Q8, the Qualified Allocation Plan, that's out right now for low-income housing tax credits, this year includes a set aside for development of permanent supportive housing as well as requires all projects who receive 9% tax credits to dedicate 15% of the units funded to a homeless preference. So they won't necessarily be permanent supportive housing, but they will be units specifically designated to address homelessness. And all the referrals for these units will come from the local Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System. So that competition comes to a close, will be making awards in the summer and fall, and the city will be part of the design process for how that program will work. One challenge we have in the permanent supportive housing space is what can we fund right now and what takes time to develop? One challenge with capital is obviously the construction timeline. So as we're building out more site-based permanent supportive housing and capital projects, you know, going from award to lease-up is about three to four years for the typical multifamily project. We, at the same time, have to continue to increase tenant-based rental subsidy-based programs because we need to house people today. So it's really about doing all things at once, if we can manage that through constrained resources, which, right now, are really difficult at every level of the government. We also are working with the city around system performance improvement initiatives. So the state of Maryland recently joined the national Built for Zero campaign, which is focused on improving coordinated entry processes and systems, increasing coverage for street outreach and shelter case management to have a housing focus so we can get people into housing more quickly, and tracking outcomes and disaggregating those outcomes by race, ethnicity, and gender. Because the reality is that within the homeless space, we see a lot of disparities. If you're a Black family, you are three times more likely to experience homelessness in our state. And that's true of Baltimore City as well. So always looking at our work through a racial disparities lens, a racial equity lens, is really important. In terms of how Baltimore kind of compares to the rest of the state, they make up about 30% of the state's homeless population. So in fiscal year '24, we had a little over 21,000 people in the state experience homelessness at some point. And that means they had contact with a street outreach program or shelter, and that was recorded in the local homeless management information system. So about a third of those folks live in Baltimore City. We do see a little bit of over-representation when it comes to chronic homelessness. So the city, while they have 30% of the overall homeless population, they constitute 50% of the state's chronically homeless population. So we have a lot of work to do with those folks who are staying in the system for a long time and developing more permanent supportive housing. More PSH is the number-one request that I have for the city of Baltimore and thing that I would love to help support through the state resources that we can bring together. In addition to all of these things, we are also, as mentioned before, increasing the state's Medicaid waiver to provide housing case management services. It is a 50/50 match, so Medicaid pays for 50%. It used to be the local government or private partners paid the other 50%. New this year, not only are we expanding the slots statewide, we were approved in January by the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. We're going from 900 slots to 2,100 statewide. We're going to be expanding jurisdictions beyond the initial four. Baltimore City is one of those four. But the state is also now taking over the match requirement. That's been a really limiting factor, as you can imagine, for local governments who are already dealing with a lot of budget priorities and trying to figure out how to make those numbers work. So Governor Moore's budget for this fiscal year includes covering all of the match that's required to participate. So we're really looking forward to those resources coming online later this year and continuing to expand how we braid those with local housing resources. And you can look out for that to happen starting in the fall. And then just the last thing, I kind of want to commend the city. As a former employee who worked in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services a few years ago, I've really seen a lot of improvements in the last few years. A couple of highlights would just be the continued focus on improving shelter conditions and making sure that we are adding case management and supportive services to shelters. It was not that long ago that when you stayed in a shelter in Baltimore City, you did not have case management at all. There was no one to help you look for housing. There was no one to help you get an increase in income. So we are starting to see those shifts, and I really appreciate the city's investment and prioritization to make shelter a more successful experience and be housing-focused. The other thing is the city's focus on permanent supportive housing. Obviously, that's newer. We didn't see that before. So I think with the city's focus, with the state's increased focus, we're going to see a rapid uptick in the number of units that are available and hopefully be able to drive those chronic homeless numbers down. And then just the other thing I would mention around affordability. So there's lots of studies that have shown homelessness is most deeply connected to the communities that have the highest income inequality and the highest housing costs. Just in the last three years alone, Maryland's had a 41% increase in fair market rent. So, you know, post-pandemic, we've just seen skyrocketing rents, you know, despite efforts to build more affordable housing. That's a challenge every community in the state is facing. And national studies around eviction data have shown that of households that go through the eviction process, about 10% to 20% do end up in the homeless system. So it's not everybody, but it is a good portion. So while we're working on addressing homelessness and getting people into housing, we also have to be focused on prevention. Just the other thing I'd highlight, this is new for us at DHCD, but my shop is also going to be launching the state's first office of tenant and landlord affairs. We're also responsible for publishing the state's first tenant bill of rights, which is going to be a required inclusion in every lease in the state starting July 1st. So we'll have a lot more coming in the next month or two as we do some press work around that and get the word out. But we are increasingly focused on renter protections and renters' rights as a tool for decreasing homelessness, and that's evidenced by being housed within my part of the division. So we really appreciate the city's partnership, all the work that these partners are doing. I think folks have commented, this really is unprecedented. We've never had this level of collaboration until the last year. And we talk regularly. Director Simmons and I talk almost every day to figure out how can we make our community better? How can we braid funds better? How can we build more housing? So I just want to commend the folks who are in this space for the partnership and the collaboration because we haven't always had that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, this is certainly a world of change since when you first came on a couple of years ago, so I do appreciate it. Any questions from colleagues? Okay, public testimony. I'll let Mr. Chair take over for public testimony.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Oh. There is a booster seat. Sorry. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I do not need one of those. I do not need one of those. Good afternoon. So in the interest of efficiency, we're going to keep public testimony to three minutes. It appears that the testimony is not for, is actually for Margaret Powell Playground. So if there is anyone present in this room that wants to provide comment on the oversight hearing for homeless services, you can either come to the RASM now and do it. If not, then I will move on to public testimony from the online users. So if you're here and want to provide testimony on homelessness, you can raise your hand and then go to the RASM because it appears no one signed in for it. Seeing none, if you are a person online, please use the raise hand function so that we can identify you for public testimony. We have no raise hands function. With that being said, public testimony will be concluded. We will end with chairs, comments. Sorry I was not here for the entire hearing. I was able to hear it online as I was driving in, but I will say two things. When we first were elected in 2020, the services have improved drastically. To the administration and finance, my fear still remains the same. There are service providers who have their actual service years that begin in July 1, some begin in January 1. I still think that given the current budget constraints that we have, we need a framework to move forward to have some general funds available to homeless services so that we can front-load that cost until we can draw it down from HUD when we get our NOFA. I think that is the clear path forward for us to maintain that we have that supportive housing, but also those who are providing those services. As someone who was previously homeless, I recognize that I nearly was evicted because homeless services did not pay the bills on time. So I understand the need for our community to have access. In addition to that, we've received public comment and discourse related to encampments. I know well that we have to think about how we coordinate across DCHD, DPW, and others, as well as the Law Department because some of the places are in public spaces. So I want to look forward to working with you guys as we move forward with quarterly hearings and how we can coordinate that because as, I believe from the last year's tracker in terms of where we saw the number of encampments, they were highly off of 83, off of areas close to 695, also down in South Baltimore where areas were very secluded. I just want to make sure that while we are focused primarily on providing housing, there are some of our friends who are in the summer, our unhoused neighbors who need those supports, and those supports need to be drastically across the continuum, whether it be mental health support or whether it be Veterans Affairs. I think we need to think about how we coordinate that, especially now that we have a governor administration that is thinking about and always pushing forward housing people. But I also think about that we still have partners at the federal government who see this as a priority as well at HUD. I think this is the perfect opportunity, and to Director Simmons, I just want to personally thank you for your leadership. I will tell you that there were days that I would go and I would have emails every day about someone being homeless, not getting services. And it's now far and through where someone has fallen short. So I applaud you for your leadership. I know this is not an easy space to occupy as someone who gets yelled on regularly for people who are unhoused and have been made encampments in public spaces, but I recognize that your team, along with myself and my staff, have walked to these people and asked them if they needed a place to go. So I recognize that you recognize their humanity and your staff recognizes their humanity, but I do know that we need to find a way to make sure that we can prevent people from even being in that situation. So that being said, similar to housing and community development, this committee will host a quarterly hearing on every three months cadence on the follow-through. What will happen is for me, I will submit through Tony Galiva a number of committee requests and then additional data supports so that I can understand. And then we'll invite your sister agencies as well to provide comment and support. Any questions, members? No. With that being said, thank you for coming.
Thank you all very much.
We will take a two-minute recess, and we will see who is here for what, and then we'll come back and do the bills in order. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Housing and Community Development Committee. I'm James Torrance, Chair of the Committee, representing from the 7th District. As we start this hearing on the Conservation District, the president is the bill sponsor, Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District. President in the committee is Councilman Blanchard to my left of the 11th District. To my right is Councilman Jones of the 12th District. And then also entering is Councilman Glover of the 13th District. The vice chair isn't present, but she is present. With that being said, we're going to get started. I believe we have planning. Controller, perfect. All right. As a brief synopsis, this bill was recalled to the committee to do a number of technical amendments. As such, my understanding from the Law Department, Jeff, if I'm correct, we have to recall or undo the amendments from the previous amended bill?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, that's right. Jeff Hoxteller with the Law Department.
Perfect. So Mr. Hox, oh, Jeff, I'm just going to call you. Tongue-tied. What we're going to do is I'm going to ask for a member to make a motion. The motion should be to rescind the actual amendments from the prior council meeting. And with that being said, I'm going to lean on Councilman Glover to make that motion. So move, is there a second?
Second.
So, with that being said, here's a discussion to allow the public to understand that what we're going to do is undo the amendments which basically wrote out the tax credit. After conversations with the administration as well as this committee and the bill sponsor, we're just going to move the bill as it originally was written, which will provide the actual tax credit, but give us a year to actually come to agreement on how to pay for the tax credit. As the city is going through, what you guys have heard from the mayor, is a 10-year financial plan where we're reevaluating all the tax credits in the city, including some of the ones that we all enjoy. Everyone is on the chopping block to figure out what those tax credits look like. But this allows us one year from today for them to figure out how to pay for this. In addition to that, that gives them one year from today, when the bill passes, to staff the office and have a program ready for the public to start applying for these districts. So what this does is give the administration 365 days after the mayor signs it to, one, figure out how to pay for this, but also make sure that we pay for the staff and also hire the staff to create a Conservation District staff. So what this does is basically shift the administrative burden onto the administration to figure it all out, but also allows the bill to go forward as originally written. With that being said, I'm going to call for a vote.
Vote on the amendment.
Vote on rescinding amendments. First, we're going to go with Councilman Parr. Oh, geez, sorry. Perfect, thank you. As Chair of the Committee, I vote aye. Councilwoman Morelos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blanchard.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Perfect. The amendments have been rescinded. Do we have a copy of the current amendment which would put the 365 days on there?
It's in.
Perfect. Thank you.
Move the amendment, Mr. Chair.
The amendment, just for the public's consumption as I read it out, which is the amendment from the administration, the amendment is amendment number one on page 11 in line 23, strike 30th day, and substitute 365th day, which makes it one year. Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Second.
Oh, you're right. We will do public testimony after this. Okay.
And just to correct the record, this amendment is from CHAP. It's not from the administration. So CHAP's CHAP amendment.
Tomato, tomato, but okay. From CHAP. This amendment is from CHAP as the record has been said. We had a motion, it was seconded. Chair votes aye. Councilwoman Morelos.
Aye.
Councilman Blanchard.
Aye.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Perfect. The amendment passes. We will open it for a public comment, and then after that, we will vote on the bill. Is there any public comment from the community?
I should, I should be used to this, right. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the council. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, one, just thank you for your diligence on this bill and this matter. I initially was responding to the previous report from the Department of Finance, which there was concerns about funding this. And so at this point, considering the rescinding of the amendment, I want to take the time to just say thank you all for your due diligence and understanding that after 50 years of inequity, racism, and discrimination that has prevented underserved communities from taking advantage of historic tax credits. And now that we are here as a community who's been in this for two years, and when the mayor has said himself that this inequity must be fixed, and the CHAP's commission is doing so, and we have Councilman Bullock who has put this legislation in, and Councilman Torrance, who's done the due diligence to move the bill forward with the full support of the council, I just want to say that it is very important and enlightening, and I would just continue to urge the Department of Finance and other agencies that are involved in this matter to do what is required and necessary for funding and successful implementation and preservation of Conservation Districts without delay, and ask and thank the council for voting in favor of support of Bill 250003.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Now that we have no more public testimony, we will be efficiently moving forward with a vote. The vote before us is the bill as amended, which will allow us to add 365 days, which will allow one year for the opportunity for the office to be staffed and have an evaluation of the tax credit. With that being said, the chair votes aye.
I need a motion. I move the bill.
Move, second. I see Jones, it doesn't matter. With that being said, the chair votes aye. Morelos.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Glover.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
With that being said, the bill has been amended. We will now take a vote on the bill as amended.
We just did.
We just did, sorry. Apologies.
Go to second reader.
Trying to get you all out of here. With that being said, this will go to the second reader on May 12, where we'll go to the full council. We're now adjourned on this bill. All right, what's my next? Perfect. We now move into... I'm sorry, John, you should have closed the remarks. It's fine. With that being said, we'll now move on to City Council Bill 25-0038, City Property, naming the playground located at Senator Troy Braley Eastwood Park to the Margaret L. Powell Playground. With that being said, we will... We will start with Chair opening comments, and then we will go into agency reports to the family of Ms. Powell. It's an honor to, bestowed its honor on Ms. Powell, a person who I feel was a light when there are dark days. I say that as someone who's often had to lean on community leaders when this job gets hard. She was one of the few that would call and check on me. But in addition to that, she always knew if I came to a community meeting, she would have a Pepsi for me. The fact that she remembered I liked Pepsi and butter pecan ice cream told me everything about her, but it was the love that she had for the kids at Matthew A. Henson. It's an opportunity to have a second career and still have a meaningful impact. I still remember the stories of her helping kids at Coppin with their financial aid, but also hugging young people that came into Matthew A. Henson every day. To even create a museum within the school in an empty space... It says a lot about her. When we had discussions about the design of this playground, the person that led that conversation with our young people and picked those colors was Ms. Powell. It is only right that, because she guided them through that process with love and they got to choose the equipment and the colors, that we honor her with this recommendation. This is a part of the $2.5 million that we're making in improvements in the park. It is honored that, one, we named this after one of the first black senators from West Baltimore, and then we also had Ms. Powell's name on it, and then eventually the field, once we renovated, will be named after Ms. Shelton. This is a powerful moment. This is a powerful moment for just honoring the neighborhood as well, because we have so many things that we don't name after people who actually meant something to the community around them. With that being said, I will defer to Councilman Bullock, who also loved Ms. Powell, and then we'll go into agency reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone who was here. If you know Ms. Powell, I mean, she was a mother to so many in the community. Even though this playground is in the 7th District, she was all of West Baltimore's, and we all claim her. From her beautiful locks to her often African garb, she was a really a beautiful spirit, an educator, but someone who truly loved the community, someone who always pushed me to be my best. When I look around this room and I see some of the folks from Coppin Heights CDC, I used to be the president of the Community Development Corporation, and she's one of our board members, one of our esteemed board members. Again, just, you know, her light still lives in so many of us, and every time you talk about her, you can't help but to smile. So this is just a very fitting tribute to her. I'm thankful to my colleague, Councilman Chair Torrance, for really pushing this forward because, again, her beauty, both inside and out, continues to shine in West Baltimore. So again, thank you for taking the step.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. With that being said, we will go with our first committee report, which is Department of Real Estate.
Good afternoon. Kisi Callaher from the Department of Real Estate. We are supportive of this bill.
Perfect. I do not see the Department of Recreation and Parks. Are you leaning?
Good afternoon. Tyler Chanel of Mayor's Office. Recreation and Parks stands behind their favorable report, and Jenny is probably watching this from wherever she is. So I must say that they really appreciate Ms. Powell as a longtime resident of the Matthew Henson community and a dedicated advocate towards this development, and so Wrenken Parks strongly supports this bill.
Thank you. Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. T. Service Department of Planning. We recommend favorable.
Thank you. With that being said, any questions from colleagues? None. We can now go into public testimony. Okay. So only in order in decency, I'm going to ask, I don't know which one of the Ivy siblings wants to come first?
Good evening. My name is Bomani Ivy, and I'm the proud son of Margaret Powell. This is my sister, Tekasa. And on behalf of the family and loved ones, I'd like to thank the council and Council Chair Torrance in particular for this opportunity to speak and give testimony in support of the renaming of Easterwood Park in tribute to Margaret Lorraine Powell. I have a couple of testimonials that were written in support of this today. I'll start with this one that was written by Margaret Powell's niece. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to you today with great respect and admiration for a woman who dedicated her life to bettering the community, my late Aunt Margaret Lorraine Powell. It is my humble request that the Easterwood Park be renamed in her honor as a lasting tribute to the countless lives she touched throughout, through her work as an educator, mentor, volunteer, advocate, and community leader. Aunt Lorraine was a guiding light in the Coppin Heights community, a woman whose passion for learning and empowerment inspired everyone she met. She was not only an educator in the classroom, but a mentor, counselor, and advocate for the youth and families of the Matthew A. Henson community. Through her unwavering commitment, she established Imani Ivy House, a boarding home for several 3rd and 4th grade girls, providing them with a place to live at no expense to their families. She believed deeply in the power of education, but more importantly, she believed in the potential of every individual, no matter their background or circumstance. Her impact extended well beyond the classroom. She played a key role in organizing community events, building collaborations with local organizations, and sharing her knowledge and support with those who needed it most. There is no more fitting tribute to her legacy than renaming Easterwood Park in her honor. A space where children can play, families can gather, and the community can come together as my aunt did throughout her life. Her life was one of service, kindness, and dedication to improve communities. By renaming Easterwood Park..." By renaming Easterwood Park in her honor, we not only recognize her contributions, but we also ensure that future generations will be reminded of the values she held dear: education, unity, and community. It is with heartfelt sincerity that I submit this request, confident that it will serve as a fitting and lasting tribute to my aunt, who gave so much to all of us. Thank you for considering this honor for my aunt, whose legacy will continue to inspire and shape our community for years to come. Sincerely, Marquita Wilson, Margaret L. Powell's niece." This is also from another family member. "Greetings. There's not much more I can say that has not already been said. My cousin Margaret was not just a cousin to me, but she was our family matriarch. Margaret was a champion for the children of Baltimore. She was an advocate for her community and those living there. Margaret had a passion for the children at Matthew Henson Elementary School. She saw a need for the children there to learn about their history. She curated a museum within the school. The love and dedication put into creating the museum is just one snippet of the things Margaret accomplished. Margaret was loved by everyone who ever encountered her. She was a walking testimony. My only regret is not sitting at her feet longer to glean more of the nuggets of wisdom she had to share. Lovingly submitted, Cousin Nadine Outlaw Moore." And this last one is from a coworker, who worked with my mother for many years. "My name is Jacqueline Stevenson. I have known Margaret Powell for more than 40 years. Margaret Powell is a very generous and giving person with a love for children. She was always working to improve her community. Margaret spearheaded numerous community projects, such as Cleanup Saturdays, clothing giveaways, bake sales, and community markets with fresh fruits and vegetables. She would send daily texts informing people of available community resources. Margaret worked tirelessly with local officials and other community members to clean up the neighborhood, parks, so families could play at the park safely. If Margaret saw a need, she would work to fill it. She started a library in her home so that children and adults would have access to books. At Matthew Henson Elementary School, Margaret started an African-American History Museum. Margaret Powell lived a life of service to others. She is deserving of this honor. Sincerely, Jacqueline Stevenson." And I'd just like to close with a few citations, and I had to pick a few because there were so many. So for the sake of brevity, I'll just name a few. This is from the citizens of Baltimore. I'm sorry, the city of Baltimore. This is a citizen citation to Margaret Powell. "I Kirk L. Smoke, Mayor of the City of Baltimore, do hereby confer upon this citation in recognition of your outstanding volunteer service to students of Robert W. Coleman Elementary, given under the corporate seal of the City of Baltimore, this 22nd day of June, 1990." This is another one from the city of Baltimore. "To Margaret Powell, I Kurt L. Smoke, Mayor of the City of Baltimore, do hereby confer upon this citation in recognition, your dedication and commitment in coordinating the campaign for a cleaner Baltimore throughout the Howard Park Civic Association, Incorporated, given under the corporate seal of the City of Baltimore, this 16th day of October, 1992. The Governor's Volunteer Appreciation Certificate recognizes Margaret Powell for outstanding and exceptional commitment to Maryland's vibrant traditions of generosity and caring, and for unstinting efforts to better the lives of your fellow Marylanders and a distinguished record of service, which has earned you a nomination for the 16th Annual Governor's Volunteer and Service Awards, April 1999. And lastly, the Governor's Citizen Service Award. William Donald Schaefer, Governor of Maryland, commends Margaret Powell in recognition of your enthusiastic and compassionate service to the citizens of Maryland, as demonstrated by your sensitive response to people and your can-do attitude. You listen, you care, you respond, you smile. You are special, and you are appreciated. 16th Day of October, 1990. William Donald Schaefer." On behalf of the family, we'd like to thank you all for this opportunity today.
Thank you, Mr. Ivy. Next, we'll have Jonika Ballard for public testimony. Awonika Ballard? That's it. I'm sorry. Wonika, sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Wonika Ballard. I am Margaret Powell's niece. And she has been such an inspiration to me as a child. We would be on the phone watching Jeopardy, and she would basically give all the answers beforehand. Before the answer, the question was even asked, she had the answer. But she inspired me to pursue higher education. I'm a graduate of Coppin State University. I'm a graduate of Loyola University, and I'm also a Baltimore County Police Officer. She inspired me to reach out to youth, to inspire them, to encourage them. And because of her influence, I started an nonprofit organization called I Am Integrity that reaches youth in the York, Pennsylvania area. So the impact that she's made from Baltimore has spanned to Baltimore County as well as to Pennsylvania. And hopefully, it will expand further on. So thank you very much for the consideration to rename the park after her.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next, we'll have Ryan Crockett. Mr. Crockett?
Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Crockett. I'm the cousin of Margaret. Just like to say a few words in support of my cousin. Margaret Laureen Ballard Powell was a beautiful woman inside and out. Laureen was a proud Afrocentric woman that loved people. Although I was nine years older than her, she was one of my favorite cousins. I knew she was destined to greatness with her impressive resume and her brilliant career at Coppin State University. Laureen, as we called her, was instrumental in the success of numerous students at Coppin for 26 years. She could have retired then, but she was so dedicated and loved helping students that she began teaching elementary school students. Laureen was the eldest of the siblings, and she took over the leadership role of her family as the health of her parents, Margaret and Floyd Ballard, began to decline. After her parents passed, Laureen became the matriarch of the family and led them with an abundance of wisdom, love, and brilliance. We all love you, Laureen, and we support this bill being passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Ms. Matthews is next.
Good evening to the committee members, and a hefty and good evening to the Chair, Councilman James Torrance. I would like to thank you for taking this opportunity to showcase a community leader who we don't oftentimes get recognized for what we do. Margaret was just a woman, as you have heard, who sacrificed her own time, her money, to make sure that you all, the council, had resources, a list of resources, every single day. And I know that to be the truth, because I am the one who sent them to you for years. And she wanted to make sure that you had the ammunition to reach out and help the constituents in your district. And for that, I want to thank her. This is an opportunity for us, the community, to highlight the work that she did so that it can be a testament to the young people, so that in the word of enculturation, what she did can be passed on to one generation to the next. And what is very strange is, I wrote this speech for her service, and I lost it. I wrote another speech for today, and I lost that as well. And it just simply says to me that Margaret wanted me to be very candid and wanted me to speak from my heart, because that's what she did. She gave from her heart. And I just want you to know that on behalf of the empowerment team, we would, we are lobbying you this evening for a collective affirmative on honoring her to rename the park in her honor. We'd really appreciate all the things that she did. Unfortunately, she had to leave us before we consider it to be her time. But the impact that she left in the community will live on forever. And she would want me to say, please, look at the older adults in Baltimore City. See how we are being abused in older adult building. She would want me to share, and I'm not sure whose district it is, if it's Councilwoman Ramos or Councilman Jones, that if you are the councilperson of Jay Van Story, you're needed. Your assistant is desperately needed in that housing complex. So I believe it is Councilman Jones. And I just want you to know that that is a building where older adult lives are being put at risk. And Margaret would want me to highlight those important issues, because we are the forgotten population, but we're the population that built this country. We assisted you in getting where you need to be, and that is helping those of us who are no longer in position to make the changes that are necessary to impact older adult life. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. I just want to remind the public that you cannot refer to a council member by their name per the council rules. We, it is fine. We usually refer to each other either by council member and their last name as members. But typically, to the public, we refer not to, according to Roberts' rules, I believe, no, Mason's rules. We don't refer to each other, the members, by their names. We refer to the member of the District 12, District 11, or District 13. With that being said, the young person is at the mic.
My name is Zari Ivy. I'm Margaret Powell's granddaughter. And it was amazing to have her here. And she really was an inspiration to me to go to school every day. And she saw the light, not only in myself, but in everyone else around her. And she inspired many to keep going after what you want to. And she was the light that like inspired you to keep going in pursuit of what you want to achieve. And she was always there to support you with anything. You could tell her about anything, and she will listen to you and do whatever it took for you to achieve your dream, because she wanted everyone around her to be happy. And I'm happy, and I wouldn't want it any other way, for her to be my grandmother again.
Okay. Dang. I was trying not to cry in this hearing. Ms. McCoy? Is there Wanda McCoy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. When I think of Margaret, she, the first person that comes to my mind is a community anchor. When you think about a community anchor, you might think of an institution. But in reference to a person, a community anchor is someone who gives hope to themselves, their family, and the lives of those in their community or the neighborhood in which they serve as a trusted resource. They are rooted as a permanent fixture in their community, functioning in their village as a liaison between family support organizations and programs and the people being served. They are trusted, that trust is supported in a time of need. Margaret did that in many, many ways. Margaret put her hopes and dreams for herself. She put them aside for the needs and desires of others. Education was extremely important to her. She got her bachelor's degree and her master's degree, and was almost finished with her doctoral degree when she thought about the diastate of the need for teachers, caring teachers in Baltimore City. So she left her program to become a teacher. In her own words, she said, "I just felt like we, Baltimore, needed more people to teach and love the children." And "love the children" is where her heart was. She made a decision to serve the community she lived in and the one that she raised her children in. So she taught at Matthew Henson. And even when she retired, she still was in Matthew Henson daily, five, maybe six days a week, first thing in the morning, late at night. And, you know, all the teachers there, the principals, will attest to that. During her years as a teacher, she positively affected generations of families. It was nothing for her to say, oh, I taught her mother and the mother's children are now in the classroom, and sometimes the grandparents. She did a lot of things with her children outside of school. Many programs took place on the weekends. For instance, the Super Scholar Second Saturday, where children would come and complete schoolwork, work on other school projects, or go on field trips. Her field trips were designed to show those children that there was something beyond their neighborhood, and that, in fact, those children belonged in that world, beyond that neighborhood, and could contribute. One of her quotes is, "Be the change you want to see." She was a great, she was a great believer in our electoral process. And in that, leaning towards that, she helped her children in the school learn the electoral process. She would have her children come in on Election Day and record the number of people who came in to vote. Later on, they would compare the numbers from year to year and the data, the data and the outcomes. One of her special days was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Holding him in high esteem, she wanted her children to get more information other than what was generally taught during Black History Month. She would have her students research Dr. King to discover more about her personal life. Then she would invite those children to her parents' home, where with her parents and her family that would be there, they would have a day in the life of Dr. Martin Luther King. They would cook the meal, cook food that they discovered he liked, and they would eat it, eating greens, when they wouldn't do it at home. And they would act like a family, as he would have done with his family at the time. Her outreach also went beyond the school. Someone already spoke about it, but every day, often before sunrise, she started sending out her list of resources for that day. So that meant she had been up till the wee hours, if not later, the night before, compiling the day's resource list. Those resources were not just for Baltimore City, but they were for the surrounding areas. And then she would begin the work of disseminating those resources. So she had many lists that she would text out, a list of people that she would text. um, a list of people that she would text or email. I see agreement there, okay? And this was daily. Um, the number of recipients were continuing to grow because more and more people were aware of their work that she was doing and recognized the importance of it. Not only did they want the information, they would send it out to their list of people. So her outreach was multiplied throughout and beyond Baltimore City. Margaret practiced community principles. To her, it boils down to the oneness of humanity. I see you, you see me. I am because you are, we are because I am. It is understanding that when I fall down, you fall down. When you fall down, I fall down. So there's never a question of us helping each other rise. And that was my friend, Margaret Powell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. You made me actually look at my text messages. The last text I had from Ms. Powell is, "Be well and do well." And before that, she was texting me about a mother who was about to be evicted. So just to give you an idea of how holistic she is as a person. It's a good reminder. I think I'm gonna keep these texts. Let me download them. But next we'll have, um, Marvin Cheatham.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to be as brief as I can. I've known Mrs. Powell since September the 10th, 1968. She graduated from, I think it was Western High School, went to Coppin. I graduated from Forest Park, went to Coppin. I became the president in 1968 of the freshman class. Mrs. Powell became the secretary for the freshman class in 1968. I think I've had Mrs. Powell as a president, uh, assistant, or as I would call it, uh, developer because she was developing me and my community and everybody else for at least 56 years that I know of. That's how long it's been. Um, I don't know of anyone that I could say was more of a gift from God than Mrs. Powell. We did so many things, uh, in three different areas. We went to Coppin. Uh, I'm a Coppin alumna, she's a Coppin alumna. We then moved to Appleton Street. Uh, I think Ms. Powell came into Appleton Street, maybe the 70s or the 80s. My family was there in the 50s. Um, so, uh, it was that period of time. Uh, we both, uh, end up being officers in Matthew Henson, which is the largest density community in Baltimore City. We have 36,000 people. The things that we do as a community and have done, uh, I would say it may take five or six of your communities to dito what we have done. Uh, I just can't say too much. My mother, my father had relationships with her. My son, my daughter had relationships with her. Uh, anyone in my family, uh, knew something that Mrs. Powell had a positive influence on all of us. Uh, you know, whether you walk the streets, whether you sold drugs, or believe it or not, she knew Freddie Gray. She, she was helping though, because everybody had respect for her and loved her. You know, I don't know anyone can honestly say they had any disagreements with her. So that tells me very clearly, she was more than a gift from God. That, you know, that's, you know, I don't want y'all to think this is a church time, but, uh, it, it, it had to be a, a sense from God that she came and met so many people. I don't know anyone that had any arguments with her during that whole period of time. So, uh, we support, uh, even, we don't think that she would have, uh, agreed that we didn't get a skateboard park, but she wanted to name the, uh, park after her. We were gonna do that anyway, once we got this skateboard park there. And ironic enough, we will give you a document that will substantiate, uh, that our state senator lied when he said our community did not support a skateboard because the documents that we're gonna give you, members of the committee, shows that Mrs. Powell, on page two of a 64-page report, was the secretary for Matthew Henson, uh, Neighborhood Association. And then on page 32, it clearly says that of the 13 issues we wanted, we wanted a skateboard park. I still believe, Mrs. Powell, we had maybe four visitations to Easterwood. She was at all of those because it was skateboard related. So folks, I don't know of anyone that I've known more, more years than anyone else. I wanna say 56 years, that's how we met at Coppin. Uh, great lady. She was definitely sent from God. I don't know anyone that had disagreements with her. And I'll close with this. We have a street, uh, she named the street, uh, uh, Appleton, but it was basically, uh, as a result of us having cherry blossoms. Uh, so she called it the Appleton. She named the street. We have a park and playground in the 1500 block of McKee. Uh, she was there to get that, that item started. I don't know of any community in Baltimore City that created its own park. She was instrumental in that. You know, so folks, I, I'll leave with this. God has sent us many, many people. Uh, but I, in my lifetime, I don't know of anyone that I feel was greater, uh, in having an effect on so many people as she did. So I'll give you a copy of our document. We wanted to be in the records because we still believe this 64-page report says something that Mrs. Powell wanted, and that was a skateboard park.
Thank you, Ms. Cheatham. Um, you can give Tony a copy of it. He'll provide it to the council members. Next is Marie Simpson. I believe it's Simpson, Sampson. Is my name Marie? Nope. All right. Is there anyone present who would like to give testimony? Yes, ma'am.
Greetings, council people. Greetings to you. Um, my name is Eliza Cooper and I'm director of Thriving Communities Collaborative. And I became the director of that organization because of Margaret. Um, I met her in the community because she was a community anchor, if I am, and we recognized each other. Um, so when the organization went through a metamorphosis, I, I joined, just came into it and she was the person there. Immediately, everybody said, "Ooh, you need to talk to Margaret." And so I did. Um, and she contacted me that very same day. And we were like that ever thereafter. So, um, I wrote an article and published it because I was grieving so hard when she passed. And I shared it with everybody. So I heard all bits and pieces of what I would have shared with you in there. But what I wanna say is that, um, uh, is a, um, she, she just took action. She, she would plan and she would grow based, whatever was needed based on what the community needs were. Uh, she leaves us tremendous steps to fill. And, um, she stayed an anchor in her community, a trusted resource. Everyone knew they could receive aid, comfort, support, encouragement, advice, and resources from her. And, um, I think we need to just make sure that her memory is continued, that her, her, um, want to be the change that, you know, you need to see. She, she gave us that example. We need to continue in that. And, um, let's help each other in our endeavors with intention, making sure that no one is overlooked and that we intentionally grow our community efforts with each other. Because that's what Margaret wanted us to do. So let's continue her legacy. And I would love to see this park named after her. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Ms. Parker again. Good to see you again.
Good evening again, council members. Um, this is hard. Thank you so much for having the forethought to, um, present this, this bill and the playground in recognition of, um, in the honor of Mother Margaret Powell. When I think of Mother Powell, she was someone who was the epitome of what intergenerational conversation, preservation, and hope combined with wisdom means for our city, our state, and our country. When we continue to intentionally get young, young people in the room with elders. And again, I just wish I had more time to have sat at her feet. But I took pleasure in doing that as many, as many times as I could and often. One of the things that I was privileged and honored to, to have in my life was for two years straight, from 2022 to 2024, every morning at 5:57 a.m., I don't know what that meant, but at 5:57 a.m., there was a call from Mother Powell. And once Mother Powell called, then I answered and I called my mother. And we had morning prayer and words of encouragement to start our day. Little did my mother, Mother Powell, know that that was really my way of keeping tabs on them because they were all, they were both just grown and needed to be, need to be tempered down a little bit because sometimes we didn't know where they were and what they were doing. But it was all for good. And I will say that Mother Powell was the epitome of what grace meant. Mother Powell showed you how to give grace in places where, she just gave grace in places where she wasn't even, um, appreciated and to people that did not appreciate her. How that might happen, I, I don't know. But she showed you how to give grace on days when you just did not want to give grace in the situation and be in a humble spirit as she was. And she was the epitome of that. And lastly, I'll say that the last text that I got from Mother Powell, that I sent to Mother Powell, was on November 26th, I believe it was. And it read, "Mother, Mother Powell, um, Mother, Mother Powell." This was, no, it, Mother Powell, it said, "Mother Powell." Sorry. "Good morning, Mother Powell." It was Tuesday, November 26th. "Good morning, Mother Powell. Today mommy read Isaiah 32:18." And that was the last text that I sent Mother Powell. The last time that I was in, in a, um, space with her doing work was on February 14th, 2024. And Mother Powell brought together, we had 14 young African-American males adolescents. And Mother Powell got those young males in the room. And we did intergeneral exercises and she had those young men playing this match, the game. And they were very competitive at it. And I looked at that scenario and I said, "Mother Margaret Powell is the only person that could get 12 young adolescent males in a room and being engaged in that respect." And finally, the last time that we were out was September 8th, 2024, when she voluntold me and another staff member of the Coppin Heights CDC, who was exer- exertively tired from a long meeting, that we were gonna go out to dinner. And she, she, without a car, told us we were gonna go over to Friday's to eat. But before we could get off the parking lot of North Avenue, she ran into a, an older adult who she had taught their child. Before we could get inside of Friday's, when we got in there to sit down, one of the waitresses, who is now a Coppin Heights, Coppin, Coppin State student, was, was one of her students at Matthew Henson. So she had an impact all over. And what I would say to those who had the opportunity to eat from the seed that she sowed while she was here, with all of the things that she did, from Kwanzaa to any, anything else in the community that celebrated our culture and life, I would say that I'm hoping that you take those seeds and you continue to plant those seeds because Mother Powell is no longer here in the present. But what she left should be sustainability enough as a lesson for us to be able to move forward and greatness. And I look forward to seeing the naming of the playground in honor of Mother Margaret Powell. Thank you.
Thank you. We can take two more persons.
Uh, good evening, council, and good evening, all. Um, I stand before you as a representative of the Coppin State University Alumni Association. We would like to thank you, um, honoring Ms. Powell and the way that you are honoring her on this day. Not only do I sit on, um, representing the alumni board, I also taught two of, two or three of her grandchildren. So I had the, um, pleasure of not being taught by Ms. Powell, but I also taught her generations right after her. And it is nothing but an honor for you all to consider her for this. So again, on behalf of Coppin State University, the Alumni Association, we thank you for honoring Ms. Powell.
Hello, Ms. Davis.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shelia Davis, uh, president of Coppin Heights, um, Ashco East Coppin Heights Neighborhood Association. I have a lot of children in my neighborhood. And I think it's only, uh, just, I guess, uplifting to see the park, the playground specifically, named for Ms. Powell because many of those children go to Matthew Henson. So it is, uh, just wonderful because then they can kinda emerge into that, um, different kinds of activities at the park, knowing that there was someone they knew that was also, you know, in the community. Uh, we don't, most of, none of them probably remember Troy Brerley, who was, I think, the first black, uh, started the first black caucus, uh, for the state. But, uh, Ms. Powell was definitely a gem. I will miss my, uh, text messages every morning and, and how I, she almost forced me to work. I'm, I'm retired educator myself, but she forced me to work early in the morning. It's like, oh, I gotta send that out, gotta send that out. So she keeps our minds, um, kinda busy. And I, I appreciate that. I missed it right away. I just, I wanted her son to know, I missed that right away. But I, I am for naming that, um, playground after Mrs. Powell because it is so impactful for the children who are coming straight from the elementary school. I, there probably are some that are at Carver as well, from, you know, from the middle school. So they don't know, because I've spoke to some of the students that go to Matthew Henson that live right, I have like seven on my block already, that, you know, they went to, they go to the school. So this is very, very impactful and I appreciate it. And I'm definitely support, in support of naming the park, the playground after Mrs. Margaret Powell. Thank you. Thank you, council members.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Um, that will conclude public, oh, okay.
Sorry, I wasn't moving quick enough. Um, good afternoon, council members and fellow community members. Um, my name is Felicia Moore and I'm a lifelong Baltimore resident and community school coordinator with University of Maryland School of Social Work, currently serving Renaissance Academy. Um, I've had the honor of serving as a community school coordinator alongside Ms. Powell at Matthew A. Henson Elementary School. And I am support for the proposed, proposal to honor Margaret Powell and respect it and beloved leader and my mentor in the work. Easterwood Park has substantial value in the community because it simply provides pace, place. Place carries meaning, memories, culture, and people. Margaret Powell has been an unwavering force for positive change in our city and I cannot speak on all her distinguished efforts and altruism and leadership in this moment. However, much like Easterwood Recreation, Recreation Center, she represents place. Her dedication and well-being, and well-being, uh, for our residents, especially our youth, has inspired countless individuals, families throughout the city of Baltimore. Adding Margaret Powell to the park's name is not just a symbolic gesture, but it is a recognition of the extraordinary efforts she's made to create a better and stronger community. It serves as a reminder to the children, which is already pretty much mentioned, who play here, uh, here, of the value of leadership service and the community engagement. It also honors the lasting legacy of someone who truly embodied the spirit of giving and love for our city for generations to come. I strongly encourage the honoring of Margaret Powell and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And that concludes public testimony. Long should we promise you are the last person?
I know. Uh, Margaret Powell was like a big sister to me. Um, Margaret kinda came out the corporate world. She always wanted, oh, Brenda Wallen, okay. Uh, she was like a big sister to me. Um, she, to me, she came out of the corporate world to do what she wanted to do. She loved children and she wanted to teach children. And we would have a, a date every weekend at my house and we did lesson plans. And as you know, Margaret, Margaret was one of the best teachers a Baltimore city could have ever had. And, uh, I just could not sit there and not say that. I was also her I was also her professional, uh, chauffeur. So as you know, she didn't drive, so she would always call me and say, "Do you have your shoes on?" I said, "I'll have them on in five minutes." So I just wanna share and I miss her dearly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So that concludes public testimony. Great. Do I have a motion to move the bill? Moved by Ramos, seconded by Jones. Uh, chair votes aye. Vice Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Councilman Blanchard?
Aye, and I'd like to explain my vote. Uh, I just want to very briefly, on this one, Mr. Chair. Um, as a council member, we get the opportunity to go to a lot of ribbon cuttings and see a lot of awesome stuff. Um, this is, in my five months, like, the most inspirational thing I've been, like, I've, I've had the chance to go to and just see the, the impact that this woman had on, on her, her family, on her neighborhood, on the kids she taught, on, like, so many people. This is like, what a life well-lived. Like, this was a lot of fun to me to, to get to hear all this. So I appreciate y'all coming out and, and paying homage to her. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What say ye, sir, your vote?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Councilman Jones? All right, of a vote of four and oh, this bill will move to second reader on May twelfth. As Chair, I will leave a closing remarks. Um, I just wanna thank the public, um, especially Mrs. Powell's children for sharing her with us. Um, often when we go into buildings, um, they aren't named of people that look like me, outside of the very few and through Baltimore City Public Schools. Um, this is one of the few honors as a council that we can bestow on any citizen in this city to name something that will be a lifelong legacy. Um, I think that this is the proper seed as when we announced a $2.5 million investment in Coppin Heights, she helped us with getting the, the young people engaged in designing that playground. She also talked to seniors about the walking paths they're gonna get. Um, I will tell you, she also told me that the fence is leaning, so we need to fix the fence too, right? And all those things started with a conversation with her and Ms. Shelia and then community members saying that we want this thing. Um, one of the things I told a lot of people before entering office and then this last week, a lot of things that I inherited, it was about finishing. Um, Ms. Powell always said, I'm gonna leave you with this one note. She's like, "You gotta run again, 'cause there, there hasn't been, uh, no one has ever had a second term since two thousand and seven." And I had to go back and look like, she was right. No one has ever, and, and things never finish. Um, she always believed in finishing things. Believe, finish what you started, even if you may not have the most ideal terms to do it. But also, as Councilman Blanchard said, her legacy is about the calming spirit that she embodied. Um, whether you're a believer of Christ or not, there is something about the light that you shine in darkness. Um, whether it be a negative comment, a long day, a child who was hungry, a parent who was spazzing out 'cause they just wanna be heard. There was always that calming voice, that gentle voice that would calm someone, um, even in the midst of the crazy. Um, so before we leave, I just wanna take a moment of silence from Ms. Powell so that we can honor not only that stillness that she provided all of us, but also that reminder that stillness is still here with us and she is still with us. So with that being said, let's take a moment of silence. We love you, Ms. Powell, and this meeting is adjourned.